Okay, this is the call to order for the CRA meeting. It's called the Community Development Agency meeting on November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. It is now five oh three P M. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would say, Councilwoman Williams, would you say some words?
It is my pleasure, pleasure. Father God, we stand before you, Lord God, with unbothered hearts and bow heads, acknowledging that you are God, and there is no other than you in control. We pray your blessings upon this meeting. We pray for knowledge, wisdom, and understanding. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much. All right, Ms. Odom, roll call.
Mayor White.
The President.
Vice Mayor Henshaw.
I am here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Mendelsohn.
Here.
Councilwoman Covage.
Present.
Jan Smith, Finance Director.
Here.
Georgina Sig, Community Development Manager.
Here.
Joyce Lattery, Public Works Manager.
Here.
Julie Danowski, Records clerk.
I'm here.
City Attorney Andrew Hand.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Wednesday, November ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Welcome, staff. We have a lot to do tonight, two meetings back-to-back. We have on the consent agenda one item. It's the CRA board meeting minutes.
Do you have proof?
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, okay. Passes unanimously. We now go to Agenda Item Number Two. This is the application for CRA Historic Preservation Facade Rehabilitation Reimbursement Grant, H P B G two zero two-three dash zero one. Nancy.
Saint Jean.
Saint Jean. Is that her name, Nancy Saint Jean?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Two oh eight four zero Chestnut Street. We have no one in attendance, but possibly someone on Zoom. Is there any public comment on this?
Just for clarification, this house is over there by the middle school. It's probably one of the older houses in town. Actually, former council members have lived there, so just a little historic fact.
Okay. Ms. Odom, any comments anywhere?
Hmm, I don't have anyone signed up, and I don't have anyone on Zoom.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Councilwoman Williams, backed up by Vice Mayor Henshaw. Counsel, any discussion? No discussion, I'll bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Passes unanimously. We go to number three on the agenda. The application for CRA Historic Preservation Facade Rehabilitation Reimbursement Grant, H P B G two zero two-three dash zero two. That's Jessica Merrick, two zero eight four seven Chestnut Street. Any public comment, Ms. Odom on Zoom?
I have someone with their hand raised. I actually thought it was the captioner at first, but it might not be. I think it's the captioner. Maybe she had raised her hand whenever we were trying to get them connected, so no, I don't have anyone else.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
That moved.
Vice Mayor Henshaw made the motion. We have a second. Councilwoman Williams, second.
She's got her hand raised.
We have any discussion?
I'll just lower it.
No discussion, I bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Please note that unanimously.
It's two houses by the middle school.
So are we, Ms. Odom, we're moving along so fast, my head swivels. Are we at number four already?
Yes.
Yes.
Who says we don't get through these quick? All right. Is there any public comment? I see no one in the seats. Ms. Odom, is anybody wanting to chime in via Zoom or some other way?
You know what? I don't have anybody on Zoom, except for one person, and I don't have any hands raised.
Is there anything counsel would like to say before we make a motion to adjourn?
And would the CRA meeting be adjourned?
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Please note, counsel, that even though we are done early, we are scheduled for a five-thirty start, so we will wait till five-thirty before we start the second meeting. All right, I would like to call to order the City Council Meeting of November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. It is now five oh three P M. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone in attendance that would like to come up and say a prayer? Tom, welcome back home.
Father God, in the name of Jesus, as always, God, we thank you. We thank you for your goodness, we thank you for your grace, and we thank you for your mercy. And Father, we call on you, Lord, the King of kings, the Lord of lords. Father, we pray your blessing over this meeting, saving, Lord. I pray that you empower and equip this council and all of us in attendance, Lord, with knowledge, wisdom, and discernment for the decisions that need to be made to bless this city. And Father, once again, I claim this city, the city of Denellin, for the kingdom of God and all your glory, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
All right, Ms. Odom, can we have both calls, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor White.
The President.
Vice Mayor Henshaw.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Covage.
Present.
Councilwoman Mendelsohn.
Here.
Joyce Lattery, Public Works Manager.
Here.
Jan Smith, Finance Officer.
Here.
Georgina Sig, Community Development Manager.
Here.
Julie Danowski, Records clerk.
Here.
Chief McQuaid. They're outside. Chief and Shane?
Uh, just Shane.
Just put him as not here until he comes.
Attorney Andrew Hand.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website, City Hall Bulletin Board, on Thursday, November tenth, and was amended on Monday, November fourteenth, to add backup to item number eleven.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Odom. Just want to go over a few things. Before I do, I want to thank everyone for attending tonight. This is a good, full crowd. We have a lot to go over. We have some presentations, a lot of business, a lot of good things. A few comments I want to make as far as how we run the meetings, is you will have multiple opportunities tonight to speak. At a council meeting, you can speak to non-agenda items at the beginning of a meeting, and then if there's something you want to speak to that's on the agenda, you wait till that agenda item comes up. So realistically, you can speak several times during council meeting. How it is different from a workshop is this is actually the meeting where counsel makes decisions. The workshop that we had five days ago is the meeting where counsel discusses things and basically sets up today. So today is when decisions can be made, new ideas can be brought up for future consideration. If you would like to speak, and we wholeheartedly encourage you to speak, this council embraces that, if you have signed up, you will be asked to speak first, so put you first in line. If you haven't signed up and you decide that you would like to speak, those that have already spoken and have signed up, once they have spoken, you will be given an opportunity to raise your hand, and I will identify you and bring you up to the podium. When you speak, we need to know your name and address. Please keep in mind that everything you say is being recorded. It becomes public record. That means anyone, anywhere, can ask for the comments that were made for this, from this meeting, and examine them. Even someone in the North Pole, if they wanted to find out what was said tonight, they can find out what's said tonight. So think about what you're going to say, get your thoughts together. We ask that you treat counsel respectfully, and we promise we will return that for sure. One of the things we have is a three-minute rule to speak when you want to speak. We have moved the timer where it's a little bit easier for me to see it. You will be held to a firm three-minute discussion. If you go to a Citrus County Commission meeting, if you go to a Marion County Commission meeting, if you speak at a committee meeting at the state legislature, when your three minutes is up, you will be stopped and will not be allowed to continue. On the advice of the attorney, I have discussed this with him, and he has advised me that if I allow anyone to speak beyond three minutes at a meeting, then anybody who wants to speak has an equal right to have that additional time. So I am the chair. It's my responsibility to run these meetings. It's my responsibility to control these meetings, and please keep in mind, the three-minute rule will be enforced. The three-minute rule used to give me problems when I first was a speaker, but basically what you do, you come up here, you want to leave us with an idea. First thing you want to do is say, I am here because I'm in favor of this, or I'm here because I'm not in favor of this. Then you give a couple reasons why you're for it or not, and then you sum it up and you say, I hope when you vote, you will vote and consider my thoughts. I have found, now that I've done it many times, you can really get your thoughts in three minutes. Really, when you leave that podium, you want to leave there with us knowing if you're for or against something and why, and you can easily do that in three minutes. So if you have a beeping device that could interrupt the meeting, please turn it off at this time. If you feel you want to have some conversation with someone who's sitting next to you, the acoustics in this room are very good, counsel can hear whispers, so if you need to talk, please go outside, have a conversation, and come back in, and we'll take it from there. So with that said, Ms. Odom, we are at, we're at.
Public comment.
Public comment. What this is, is public comment on non-agenda items. It means that if there, if it's something that's not on the agenda, something new, something that's a carryover from some other time, you can speak at this time.
Counsel comments are perfect.
Counsel comments?
My apologies.
Yeah, thank you. Is there any counsel comments on the agenda? Okay, thank you. All right. Is there anyone, Ms. Odom, that's signed up for comments that are not on the agenda?
Oh, here is, I'm sorry. Kathy Dunn.
Ms. Dunn?
Kathy Dunn, one one three eight six hundred, Drive Dunhill. I'm here as a citizen. I have not met one citizen who doesn't think that our city suffers from excessive blight. And I wanted to address our elected representatives to consider looking at the blight that is caused by our city itself, because I think that we can't expect business owners to address the blight if we have neglected to take an honest look at it. And one example I'd like to bring to your attention is the parking lot behind Gary's Carpet and Mrs. Henshaw's Realty Office, and it borders the fire station and police station. That parking lot is a significant example of the blight I'm talking about. It's used for storage of big, huge tires, and I think that we can do better for our city. For our city, as I understand it, it's a city parking lot, and I think we ought to take an honest look at that before we go making expenditures on other things that might be nice, before we take care of the blight that's in the center of our historic district. Also, the storage sheds that are there, I understand it's a need for storage, but could we maybe move those over to Public Works or even rent a private storage facility? But the other thing is the Dempsey dumpsters, when the waste management contract was negotiated, why did we allow the dumpsters to be placed so visibly in opposition to our comprehensive plan and our codes? They should be hidden according to our codes and our comprehensive plan. So possibly that is something that we could look at to negotiate with them, to move them or provide some type of shield, decorative fencing around them. So that's what I wanted to say. Also, our city, our parks, the benches are apart, and they're very dirty, and I think we can do better by keeping those clean and painted. And our city hall itself, possibly planting some grass, even though we'll have to pay the water for that, it would be, it is our brand. When you walk up to it, it's the most beautiful piece of land in our city, and we want it to be, reflect the pride that we have in our city and the care that we take for it. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Just because my name was mentioned, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that there is no blight behind the building that I am, and I just want to make sure that's cleared out. Just real quick.
All right. Is there anyone else, Ms. Odom, that has signed up?
No, sir.
All right, is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda? Okay, please make note that the public has had its opportunity to speak to non-agenda items. I believe we're going to consent agenda. For those of you that do not understand the consent agenda, that is something that counsel has had a consensus on from the workshop and deals that we've discussed it to the point that we're in agreement. So it will be passed without further discussion unless a council member wants to discuss it and pull it off the consent agenda. So on the consent agenda, there's only one item. It is item number one, which is the buying the Agrenicus website. Is there anyone in the audience, has anyone signed up, Ms. Odom, to speak to that?
No, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the consent agenda? Okay, please make note that the attendees have had an opportunity to speak. Okay, can I have a motion to pass number one on the consent agenda?
Send it.
We have a second.
Send it.
Is there a counsel that at this point needs to make a comment or wants to say anything to it? Okay, I'll bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Passes unanimously. Now we go to the fun parts of the meeting before we get into the business. So right now, we go to number two, which is a special presentation for one of our hometown heroes, Louis Cannon. Okay, Ms. Odom, Louis comes up. Hi, Louis. Well, come on over here and face it. All right, here is a plaque of appreciation. This is from the City Council Certificate of Appreciation presented to Louis Cannon. This is in recognition of your heartfelt dedication to the Denellin community and citizens. You are hereby commended for your support of planned growth and proactive code enforcement, as well as your advocacy to protect the Rainbow and Wippehooji Rivers. Your contribution toward the acquisition and development of Blue Run Park in Denellin deserves generous praise. You are also applauded for stepping up to the plate and serving as both an honorable City Councilwoman and the State Planning Commissioner over the past fifteen years. Your extensive educational background and professional leadership proved invaluable, and your team approach to support the council in the planning issue in their endeavors improve the quality of life in Denellin. With heartfelt gratitude, pride, and appreciation for your generous service enthusiasm and commitment, the Denellin City Council, on November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, signed by Mayor William D. White, signed also by Vice Mayor Valerie Henshire, Councilwoman Anita Williams, Councilwoman Jan Covage, and Councilwoman Julian Mendelsohn, city seal on it. Congratulations. All right, we have another presentation here for Ms. Paula Cobre. Come on up, please. Hi, Paula. You know, why don't you turn it on and face it. Okay, City Council, this is City Council Certificate of Appreciation presented to Paula Cobre. In recognition of your generous contributions to the Denellin Community Days Event hosted by Denellin Community Services Incorporated on Saturday, October eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Your support as Chairwoman of the Talent Show provided an exciting component to that event, allowing Denellin's hidden gems, a venue, to share their skills and unique talents with the community. As a result of the success of this event, much-needed funds were raised for local food, banks, services provided by Denellin Community Services, Inc. You are hereby commended for the volunteer hours, artistic talent, and your distinctive vision you have so generously contributed to our city. Heart of gratitude, pride, and appreciation for your commitment to the enthusiasm for your community, Denellin City Council will issue the certificate of appreciation, signed by William D. White, the mayor, Vice Mayor Valerie Henshire, Councilwoman Jan Covage, Councilwoman Anita Williams, and Councilwoman Julian Mendelsohn. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, before we go on to item number four, which is Department Head, we have a request. Can we move up number eleven on the agenda? Number eleven on the agenda is. To discuss it right now. I guess there is someone that is from the company we're talking to, and they are here, and it'd be nice if they could take care of their business with us and not have to wait to speak. Counsel?
That's fine.
Is it okay, Ms. Covage?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. So for you that are following, item number eleven, the Agenda Item Number Eleven, has been moved up to now. Sir, welcome. Name and address?
How are you doing? My name is Dilshan Singh. Address is thirty Kenshaw Place, Lawrenceville, Georgia, three zero zero four four.
Mr. Mayor, we have been presented with a draft agreement for the kiosk and management of the revenue that's collected, and Dilshan is here to answer any questions. We did receive this late last week, so it's in its draft form, and we can't execute it until we actually put an ordinance in place, so there is time to review this. Dilshan did prepare a pro forma of what a revenue stream would look like, along with incorporating the fees that the city would be responsible for, and then he will project that. If maybe, Dilshan, if you could maybe take a look at it and kind of go over it a little bit.
So.
Andy, even blow it up as much as you can. Focus it on the.
Can I ask for my.
Absolutely not. I'm sorry, I would have made it larger if I knew, but I do apologize. But it's built out for twelve months, and that's why it's on one sheet. But this breaks down every expense from pre-launch to launch, once we begin, and what the expenses would be moving forward for each month. And these assumptions are based on a potential of a hundred total launches a day, but we're only assuming that we get ten launches a day for the resident rate that we had discussed at fifteen dollars, and then another ten launches a day at twenty-five dollars. What this gives us is a total of seven thousand five hundred in non-resident boat launch revenue, and then an additional forty-five hundred in resident boat launch revenue. We're then deducting the sales tax. The total projected revenue is eleven thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. Then we have some expenses included below. There's insurance, that's a few things. There is general liability, garagekeeper's insurance, and any additional insurance that's needed that will be provided by us. There's a cost for the technology, which is in case a kiosk is busy or if there is any issues with the kiosk, right? Let's say there's not somebody that is able to come in in time and change your seats or things like that in the machine, there'll be a second option to collect the revenue. And we have a ninety-nine percent upgrade on that service we provide. We've never had it go down. So, and then below that is a two hundred dollar charge a month for the kiosk backend, that is for the company that provides us the kiosks, for them to provide data services and that sort of thing. And then there are ninety-nine dollars in accounting fee. We will be collecting all the revenue, and we will also be reconciling it with a bank account and providing you that as a statement before the twentieth of the following month, each month. We will also with that include whether it's an ACH or a check, however the city would like it, will include your share of the revenue. And then below that, there is an expense for some bank fees, that is for the separate account just for this project. Then there is some credit card fees, and those are assumptions based at four and a half percent per transaction. And then we have deducted, we have, we're not charging any management fee, any service fee. If the city requires somebody to come out, we include a rate in here for that. And then if the city would like us to also manage any permit parking, we've also added the option of that, and it says optional if you would like us to manage. But that brings the total projected expense on an average month between twelve eighty-one to twelve ninety-nine a month. The, after the revenue and the expenses, the city of Denellin, on average, would receive between five thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and six thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars, based on these assumptions. And below, we've also included the potential, whether the city would like to purchase a brand-new machine or a used machine, we're able to provide either one, and those costs are shown here for a used kiosk, including. For a used kiosk, including the actual machine is $2,800. There's a cost for deliver, install, connect it, they run on solar panels. The cost for that is another $2,700. And then we have included an optional annual support and maintenance plan if the city would like to do that, for another $750. And then we've included a $2,500 charge for the initial startup expense for all the signage that would be required in the parking lot to direct people on how to use the technology or the kiosk. And then below that are the expenses listed if the city would like to purchase a new kiosk. And for that, the expense jumps up by about $2,000 on the machine itself, or I'm sorry, $3,000. The machine new is $6,560. Delivery, install, connectivity is $3,200. Annual support and maintenance is still $750, and then the startup costs for all signage is $2,500.
Any questions?
Absolutely.
I'll start off. So to initiate this program, to start a startup, what is the total startup fee you said it would cost to put this in play?
Absolutely. So if the city chooses to buy a used machine, it would be in total $9,025. If the city decides to purchase a new machine, it'll be $13,287.
Okay, the question I'm asking is like if I'm buying a new car?
Yes, sir.
I want to know what I'm paying when I walk out the door, not anything in addition to. So you're saying to start this up with a used machine, totally it'll be $9,000 and change, with a new machine it'd be $13, and that's all inclusive?
All inclusive.
And what did you say the reoccurring fees are?
They average between $1,199 and $1,200 and some change. I'm sorry, $1,281 and $1,299 a month. That depends on whether, how many days are involved?
Okay. I have spent some time on this, and I have found in the summertime, the peak of the summer, we probably get minimally 60 cars a day, 60 boats a day, and it could be up to 100. Because the reason we don't know for sure is we only have about 40 parking spots.
Right.
And then people will park after launching their boats, they'll park all over the city. And then during the course of the day, you have some people coming and going, so, you know. So I'm looking at it that I know, I know there's at least 60, and it could be up to 100. So you said your projections were based on 100 boats a day?
On 20.
Assuming that 100 max.
So, and I'm basing it on percentages below that, so I assumed 10, 20 boats a day launched altogether. And that was to account for whether it was January or August and have an average throughout the year.
All right. So at 20, it's going to be much more than 20, especially during the season, much more.
Yes, sir.
So based on your calculations, we're looking at now return of investment, right?
Yes, sir.
So based on the $9,000 startup fee and the monthly, monthly $1,200?
Yes, sir.
Based on your figure of 20, 25 cars, you were thinking of charging $15 for residents and 25 for not. That's what you kept. That's something for this council to...
Absolutely. That is what we just used to put this financial rule right.
And I would like to suggest to counsel, if we go down this direction, that's a separate discussion what we're going to charge, right? So based on your number of 20 at the 25, 15 charge, what did you say per day the amount of money would come in, or what would be our net profit when it that way with those figures?
The city, for all expenses, not including the startup cost, would profit at those numbers between $5,999 to $6,213.
Per month?
That is correct. That is only for 20 boats launched per day. Now, if that goes up to 100, that number then obviously jumps as well. The only expenses that change as that grows would be just sales tax, credit card processing fees, and everything else would remain the same.
The two things that would go on here, number one, we would have more than 20 during the season. 20 maybe during now, you know, or less. And I don't know, just depends on what council wants to do, whether we're willing to go as high as $25. So I have a feeling the number of units that come and use it will be much higher than the number you just randomly used.
Absolutely.
And I think council, I don't know, I'm only one of five, may be a little reluctant to charge 25, so it might be low. But I would say your figures that you're putting out where our net profit would be, you consider we will probably have three times, at least three times, the number of cars. I would say the return of investment will be much greater than what your... I think your numbers are very, very conservative.
Absolutely.
That might be what we do in the wintertime.
Absolutely, and I wanted to take into account whether it was January, February, March, and I'm assuming those are going to be the slower times of the year, it's a bit chillier outside, and I'm assuming majority of the revenue coming in the summer months. But I'm just averaging that down to just 20 launches per day. That means whether if we have 10 on one day and 30 on the other, it all balances out.
Counsel, I have asked a lot of questions, please. It's your turn.
Could I have a question on the comparing the used unit and the brand-new one? What kind of warranty is on the new one?
It is a one-year warranty from the manufacturer.
And what happens after a year if it usually hurts?
Absolutely. So that is the reason we've included the annual support and maintenance plan for $750 a year. And what that allows us for you to be able to call somebody at any time if there are any issues with the machine, for the city to call them.
And when you say call somebody, what might we expect in wait time for service?
Generally, because you will be calling us, our nearest office is about 40 minutes away in Ocala, Florida, we will probably have somebody here within 48 hours at the latest. That's what I would say.
Sounds good, thank you.
Absolutely.
Just a quick on the used, so kind of going to your question, is there a warranty on the used unit?
Not from the manufacturer. We would be willing to, as a company, we would be willing to provide a 30-day warranty on that machine.
So basically, if, let's just say we did the 15 and 25. May I go up a little bit? No, I'm sorry, down. It was my up, you're down. Go up or down just a little bit more back, see the bottom number. About that. What's that? Thank you. Okay, so basically, if we did go with the new unit, we would basically have it paid off with all the expenses of the put-it-in, walk-away, you know, the car dealership kind of thing of $13,000. In all honesty, it would almost be paid for a brand-new unit in two months.
Correct.
If we go with the low numbers, even if we went at $10 and $15, or 10 and 20, we would still probably max out. And what do your other vendors do? Do they usually go with the used or with a brand-new unit?
We recommend a new unit.
Kind of like a new car.
The price difference is not that great, so I would recommend a new unit.
Yeah, I mean, common sense kind of says, you know, if you're paying it off within two months, it's kind of like a no-brainer, so...
Absolutely.
I have one more follow-up question based on Ms. Kovich.
Can I just ask? I was just having a...
Are you still...
Yeah, yeah, I just... What is the average, and I can't remember, I know y'all are from Ocala, and what is like the average that would say that boat launches charge in this area?
Right, so I would say it's, we've looked at the area, we've looked at other markets around like this. I would say it ranges anywhere between $10 and $40, $45.
Wow.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we do know that people charge us 20 right now. Ms. Kovich, should you have another comment?
No, I think that was a good question about the rates. $20 at our local county park?
Absolutely, the rates would be up to the city to decide.
Right.
Thank you.
One final question I have for you based on Ms. Kovich was, what would happen on Friday afternoon? The machine would break down, and we would have, in the middle of summer, where we have two of our biggest days, Saturday and Sunday. How is that handled? That could easily, that could happen. Maybe it's vandalized, maybe someone jams, is pissed off, and they jam something in the collection, you know, so what happened?
Absolutely, and that is why we're recommending that the city does two options. One is a kiosk, the other is electronic. It's through a, it'll be signs posted around the parking lot, and the customer would have the ability to scan, whether it's a QR code. Let's say they're going to have an iPhone or don't have a, they still have a flip phone in a sense, they're still able to text a five-digit number with a code that is assigned to this location, and they would be able to pay on their phone. And that is to minimize people waiting on the machine, it backing up, or the machine going down, right? There will always be two options for the city to collect the revenue.
And if someone wanted to prepay, let's say the city came up with a plan for, you can pay for the year?
Absolutely.
So that they can do that and somehow program it into the kiosks when they come, or how was it?
Yes, sir, so we, I've included that up here, if you could scroll up just a tiny bit. The monthly annual boat launch permit management, that would mean we would create a, whether it's a website link attached to your site or just separately to us, they would be able to go on there and reserve whether it's a monthly permit or an annual permit. And all they would do when they, whether they're using the text-to-park system or the, I'm sorry, text-to-launch system or the kiosk, they would be entering their license plate, and the license plate would be recognized as a permit order.
And Ms. Smith, if you can refresh my memory, this is important. I believe someone from staff told counsel that when you did a survey, at least 90% of those that use the ramp are non-residents.
That's clear.
And most of them are repeat, meaning they do it more than once a year.
That's clear.
So the majority of our business would be non-residents and people that use it often. That seems like the target we're after, right?
Yes.
I do have one question, Dilshan. Your setup, delivery and setup fee, there's a $500 difference between the used and the new machine, can you explain?
Absolutely, so the used machine, we have already used at other locations, so it's already set up in some ways. So the wiring's already ran, the solar panels are installed. When we buy a new one, it comes in a crate and it has to be assembled, and that is the price difference in that.
All right, any other comments, counsel?
What are we doing with this? Are we just telling you to go forward as a consensus?
Well, that's what we're hoping, because then we'll send it to Andrew. There is one correction on the contract that needs to be made, one in small paragraphs stricken, if you're first to parking instead of boat launch, but otherwise, you can then submit it to Andrew for his review, and if there are, you know, just some changes that need to be made, we can get it all ready for when, to hopefully execute at the same time you have your second reading of your ordinance, because you still need to have an ordinance for your boat launch program, and we need to discuss the fees and adopt fees via resolution. So that kind of has to be firmed up a little bit.
Very good. We understand, this is conceptual. Okay, I think counsel has fully discussed this. Before a motion is made, it is now time for public comment.
But Mr. Mayor, the chief needs to say something.
Yes, chief?
I just got one question for the police. How do we know who's paid and who hasn't paid?
Absolutely. So with our system, we will integrate into a, whether we can provide a handheld device for the city or multiple, or they can download an app on their cell phone device, and they'll be able to walk through the parking lot and look at the license plates, and anything that isn't on the system will not be paid. And they'll be able to cycle wherever the plan is for the city.
I think one of our major concerns is, it's a singular ramp, which is one, and we don't want to have a situation where someone's there, and they're going, they're trying to pay, and they can't figure it out, and now we have 10 boats that can't get in. So we're very concerned that it's simple, easy, and anybody can figure it out. You know, a lot of people, I do know people, in fact, some in this room, that they don't know how to text, okay? So you can't assume people know how to use a smartphone.
Absolutely.
So that's a concern.
Yes, sir. The kiosk that we're providing is very similar to any type of parking lot kiosk that you pull up to, you put in whether it's a license plate number or a space number, and we'll have big instructions right above the machine as well, directing people on how to pay. And we're also willing to look at any other options that the city wants to look into, whether it's by mail or something like that for anybody that didn't pay and doesn't know how to.
And what I would suggest, counsel, I apologize for asking so many questions, but this is important. Would someone pay before they back their boat into the ramp, or would they be trying to pay while they're taking that space up? Obviously, the question is, it'd be preferable if they would pay first before they possibly can't figure it out and keep everybody else from using the ramp.
Absolutely, so the signage we will create and put around the parking lot will state that they need to pay ahead of time, and then back the truck or vehicle up with the boat, and then unload the boat.
Very good.
And the placement of the kiosk won't be extremely close to the boat ramp, where they can just back in, get out, and use the machine. I think we would place it a little bit away.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
At this time, before counsel discusses and possibly makes a vote, this is an opportunity for the public to give us your thoughts on this. Mandy, do we have anybody signed up for agenda item number 11?
No, sir. And tonight, you really don't need a motion. We had put a proposed motion on the agenda, and the event that we did, we were able to finalize the agreement by this evening, but it still needs to be reviewed by the attorney, so...
There's no...
The proposed motion would have been to authorize you to sign the agreement, but we're not ready for that yet.
Counsel, since this is a topic of interest, and it won't be voted on because of what Mandy just said, is there any objection if anyone in attendance would like to give comment to this, that we listen to their comment? Okay, even though we will not take action on this tonight because it has, it's got to be created as an ordinance form, which takes a couple months really, be very, very interested in hearing what the public might have to say. So no one has signed up on it, is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak to us? Yes, Paula.
Paula Coker at 11983 Palmetto Way, Dunellen, Florida. I would just be interested in seeing somebody go through the process of signing in, so that we, you know, it's easy to say, it's easy to sign in, and that you're dumb if you don't know how to do it, but I think it's something that one of the city, somebody should look at and see if it is easy enough to sign in, because if it gets to be too complicated to sign in, people will be directed to not go there. I think we have to validate that this is an easy sign-in thing. That clear? Thank you.
And it sounds like have a couple-week test run or something like that, have someone standing down there explaining it. I think that's something we might talk about, thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak to this? Yes, sir. Come on up to the podium, name, name and address.
Yes, I'm Allen Brooks, 19255 Southwest 90th Lane Road, Dunellen, Florida. I was saying, this is a great idea, as far as just a comment on it, as far as doing this, to have one similar image that I use, and like Jill was saying a long time, if someone can't use that kiosk, they have to probably have a phone number listed, and you can call that number and you can sign right then before you go in. Because the worst thing, especially, we always have a problem here, sometimes putting in, I know that I'm a, some people get a little excited, you know, when you're putting in, and I've seen that happen, so I think... So I think that this company or this gentleman probably, you probably have, they have a phone number there that you can call and they'll go ahead and do you right there over the phone, at least the one in memory does it that way. And also, I wanted to make a quick comment. I want to say if the counsel would consider fixing the ramp up some, the padding and stuff is kind of falling off, the anchors and stuff are kind of falling off that ramp. I know that's not what we're talking about right now, but it's something that I wish we look at because it's getting a little, it's getting a little rough over there. And the last thing I want to comment on is I want to thank this police department, the job that they do on this Rainbow River. If you ever took time to ride out, you know, with these officers and chief when they go out and do the Rainbow Rivers, I know FCW does a lot of other part, the relationship they have with the people there and the job they do of saving lives and telling people we're safe is unbelievable. And if you don't believe me, go out and ride with one on one day. Dunell Police Department on that Rainbow River, they do a wonderful job. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, master.
And Mr. Brooks, just real quick, to let you know that the fees that we get from this boat ramp. Those fees will have to go to the, back into the boat ramp for another park with water access. So just to let you know, that's what these funds are there to do.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
For instance, we have thoughts of building a kayak launch, repair the floating dock that's there right now.
Wonderful.
Possibly consider playground equipment, you know, so this money we will get won't go into the general fund, it will be used to improve our parks.
Thank you, sir. A lot of times those small kayaks, kayaks and small boats are put in and the other boats are waiting to get in, so.
It's very dangerous right now where you have kayaks launching right next to the power lines. And you're right, you want to see how easily people get frustrated on a Saturday afternoon and see what happens when someone doesn't know how to back a trailer up.
Guilty.
And they delay everything.
My wife says, don't you mess this up. I'm still getting it. My turn, I did.
After doing that, if you were running for office, you have no chance.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
You gonna do Christmas this year? You gonna do the parade?
Absolutely.
Okay. See you then.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak to us? Okay. Like we said, this is still a couple of months off, but we are gonna do the preliminary.
This is, this part isn't a couple of months off, this is just, you know, we're gonna go, we're gonna go ahead and submit this after the couple of changes and submit it to Andrew and get his take on it and.
We should be able to bring it back in December.
Or at least the draft ordinance.
Oh, the draft ordinance. I thought just.
I don't know where we are with it.
Yes, I think it's reasonable that the draft ordinance would come back in December unless there's some sort of a hiccup that's discovered down the line. But December would make sense and then that would, if it was December, we'll put it on second reading schedule for January with adoption, we'd bring it in January.
All right. And they're.
Otherwise, January, February.
So included in the ordinance would be the naming of the company? Or would the ordinance be separate from the selection of the company?
No, the ordinance simply creates the ability for the city to.
I understand. So at what time, at what time, at what time would we decide what company we're going to choose or if we're gonna choose this company?
You can make that decision beforehand as a decision that's tentative, but the final decision, in other words, when the contract would be executed, would be after second reading.
But, but Mr. Mayor, we, as a council, we voted to accept this company to give us the contract. So this is the company we're going with unless there's something that Andrew hates about the contract and we all have a hissy fit. Right?
Ms. Odom, we, I don't think we have yet made a council decision to choose this company. Is that correct or have we?
No, not officially. Not, not in an official capacity. This is staff's recommendation is to use Safe Heart. We, they're local is one of the biggest pluses with them. And they're very, they've been very flexible in how we would like to do this. They do provide both options. So it's our recommendation that you were to enter into a contract with them, but we needed to know how it was gonna work. And, and so if I'm not mistaken, Andrew, before some of our discussion, Andrew needs to know kind of how it's gonna work in order to develop the ordinance. So we needed to have some sort of idea conceptually of how this is gonna work with the kiosk and the QR code, how that's gonna work.
Put it on the December agenda, okay? And possibly we can.
We'll bring the, we'll bring the agreement back in December.
Yeah, the, the contract.
Right.
We can deal with the contract and deal with the ordinance.
Right. And you can have first reading of the ordinance in December.
And they were the least cost provider.
Super. All right. I think we're good. Everybody good? All right. Excellent. Thank you very much for your presentation, sir. I really appreciate it.
Stay back home.
Thank you.
Georgia.
Okay. So now if you're watching where we're at on the agenda, then please work with me tonight because I've got a lot.
We're back at number four.
Yeah, I have a lot to keep straight tonight and we haven't even gotten into the thick of it yet. Okay, we're at number four, which I believe is department head reports. Ms. Odom?
I don't have anything tonight, sir. Do you have anything?
Just one quick update on the Duke Energy EV charging stations. I received a note today or an email today. The engineering has been completed. Once the electrical contractor has signed off and got a list of materials, they'll be providing us with permit requests to begin construction.
And that's it. I gave my last report on Wednesday and no changes. I won't wait till next. Very good. Ms. Odom?
Georgina? Yes, I have a few, a few reports, so you're gonna be here for a while. Sorry. Just wanted to give you an update on December 3rd. We're gonna be having a Santa at the park. There's gonna be other events going on that day. It's gonna be the Historic Shops from 9 to 3 and then the first Saturday from 9 to 2. But Santa at the park, it's going to happen. We're gonna start by opening a holiday ceremony, which I, Community Development wanted to ask the mayor to give the welcoming speech. And so that we can open the holidays and from there, Santa will take over. We're gonna have a booth for him where people can come and take their pictures. We're not gonna have a photographer in place, but people are welcome to bring their own cameras and take pictures. It's gonna be from 4 to 5. And the good news is that it's going to be the, I'm sure you're familiar with Santa at the Rainbow?
Yes.
Well, he's, he's, he has agreed to do it. He does not want us to charge the city a dime, so he's gonna do it for free because he loves to know. So he'll be there that day from 4 to 5. There's gonna be fun activities all through the park. There's gonna be games, a bounce house, food, entertainment, and yes, an ice skating rink. And I, and I told you guys, and we were kind of scratching our heads about it and we didn't know how we were gonna come up with the money to get an ice skating rink. But Community Development was able to contact a company that is willing to do a demo for us on the day of the event for free. So they're gonna come show off their product and they have sent us a quote to purchase the product. And Community Development has reached out to very, very good friends who are willing to donate for the purchase of that rink. So the City of Canal will have a rink going forward, hopefully if the donations come through. We're still in the process of getting that, but if we do, it will be paid for with donations, so we won't have to allocate funds for that. The company that's doing it is Blue Gator Echo Rinks. They, they will be putting the rink in the, where the pickable court is and they're gonna decorate that whole area there, so we don't even have to worry about decorations. That's really wonderful. They have also, I don't know how to say that. So we have not allocated a location where we're gonna put the future rink. That is something that Troy and I are gonna have to discuss and see where the best location would be and then bring it to your attention. If that's okay with you guys, then we'll go forward with that. Food and drinks are gonna be provided by local vendors. Advertising is gonna be done at the Riverland News, Opal Star Banner, city website, Chamber, the Chambers website, Facebook and the Marion County website. Ms. Laura Schaefer has been willing to put it on their tourist website as well, so we're gonna have a lot of exposure. There will be a volunteer lineup and a staff lineup, which we've already reached out to volunteers and Michelle is helping me with that. And we're gonna have an itinerary coming forward, so we have people at the park ready to assist the residents. Wayfinding signs, you know that I'm leaving that till December, so I don't have any updates yet. We're working on it. The Historic Village Shops signage on the corner, it was brought to my attention that some residents wanted to upgrade it, so they are doing that. It's gonna be a temporary upgrade, but they wanted us to bring to your attention the, that sign as part of the wayfinding sign project. So if, if you are all in agreement, I can incorporate that into the wayfinding sign The lighting in West Penn, we're still working on that. We did receive a second model that has two heads instead of the one head model and we're gonna be featuring it outside so that you see how bright it is. If it's something that you all agree with, then we can go ahead and get that. The Blue Way signage is still pending. We're still working on that. As soon as we get all, all the county permitting and, and everything that's needed to put up the sign, we'll let you know. I will be sending you a, an image of the signage that we kind of thought about putting on that entrance to the Historic District. So I will be sending you something via email so that you all can comment something you like. You can let me know, incorporate it. As far as Community Development goes, I will be sending you all an email and I, if I kind of ask for your recollection, at the beginning of my tenure with the city, I did a full report of all the issues that I was handling and I've updated that report to send it to all of you. I have right now, as far as planning and zoning is concerned, 78 items that I'm working on, that the department's working on, not just me, but me and my assistant. Mind you, it's just me and my assistant. But we are working on those items very diligently and I want to make sure you know that this is what we have, because sometimes it is misconstrued, the amount of work that we're handling and, and it's being taken to the side and not realizing that we only have two people working, this department, working on 78 different items. And all of them are important and all of them have a lot to do. As far as code enforcement, I have 23 items that are gonna come in front of you so that you see what we're working on on a daily basis. Community Development is very busy. We are also dealing with annual reports, eight of them during the year. We have three month, monthly reports that we have to do. We have one quarterly report, one by annual report and five, and a five-year reporting that we have to do. That is also part of what we do. As far as permitting is concerned, we have 26 permits. Three of them have been special events. One is the Two River Festival, the Bike Florida, and the First Saturday Market, okay, that we've processed. We have four commercial permits and 19 residential permits. So my assistant has been very busy. As far as code enforcement, we have 22 open cases just this past month and 11 new ones. We are in the process of submitting follow-up notices to the 22 cases that we still have pending and we will be working on that as soon as we obviously get the time to get to it. And as far as cloud permit status report is concerned, I know that there was some concern on that, I wanted to let you all know that there is testing in progress. We've been submitting all the information that they've requested so far. There's a testing escrow setup and payment processing being done, the configuring and setting for each permit type, then sub-permit type to ensure system prompts, appropriate documents, inspections and fees. There's gonna be a training happening, which is gonna incorporate reports, fees maintenance, miscellaneous administrative configurations and so on. This is scheduled for the 17th of November at 4 o'clock. It's pending the account information from finance, which will be provided to them. The data, for data importing to cloud permit is ongoing. My assistant Kelly is prioritizing testing and configuration of building permits and will focus on the data cleanup later to avoid holding off the appointment any further because we have been, we had to postpone it a little bit. We were hoping that we would go live at the beginning of this month and that didn't happen because of the amount of work that we had to put in through. The discussion on options of ongoing live cleanup, data and running data import and then data is ready at the later, later date. So this is all data processing, data inputting, data collection and it's ongoing on a daily basis. As far as code enforcement, because this module does incorporate code enforcement, which is something we didn't have with the existing module, we have to basically create the wheel, because all we have for code enforcement is a spreadsheet on Excel. And this module is gonna, it's gonna incorporate a lot more than that. So we are sending them, you know, we have to create violation letters to put it on the system so that the code enforcement officer has them in hand, so that they can distribute it when the time comes and all that good stuff. So it is a lot of work and I would really appreciate you understanding that. As far as our code enforcement candidate, I had a very nice call from a code enforcement officer that worked for us. I don't want to disclose the name because he has not applied yet and he's working for someone else that we know, but he is interested in the position. He is certified and he has advice that he's interested in the position. He has requested the package. I sent it to him. He's going to fill it out and get it back to us. I've already scheduled him for an interview on Thursday and hopefully if everything goes well, that is an option. I understand that the police department has another option and I leave it in your capable hands to decide whether you want me to continue overseeing code enforcement or take it to the police department. That would be all up to you. I have a lot on my plate as it is. I wouldn't mind leaving it for police officers, but that is your decision. Okay? He, he worked for us. He did, just so you know, he did, he was able to accomplish two very big cases that we had on our pipeline up to, almost to complete compliance. So he works very diligently on code enforcement and also worked on 16 notices that went out during his tenure here with us. He was very, he was here for a short period of time in September.
Georgina, I think the counsel would say to you, proceed, you know, go forward and talk to this man and see if he's a viable option. The police may also have a viable option, so counsel have a choice. So I think everybody would like you to just bring us something to decide on.
Okay. I will do that. I have an appointment already with him, so I will let you know. And then the T-Mobile Hometown Grant, I have. And then the T-Mobile Hometown Grant, I understand that we have discussions on the workshop as to having other grants available that I would have to really look into. I have not. But I did make a plan for the kayak launch to submit it to the T-Mobile Hometown Grant. And if, I would like to send it to you, because I don't want to take more of your time, but I would like to send it to you by email. And if you all agree with that, I can send it to the county, because they have, they are waiting for this plan in order to get their letters of support for us. So, if you are okay with the information that I've collected, and you feel comfortable sending this to the county, I will send it to you by email, and you can sort of go back with me and let me know your thoughts, and I will over that to the county to get support, okay?
When is that due?
The, well, the thing is that when we're going to submit this grant, we're going to need a plan to go with it. And the plan explains everything in detail, the, you know.
I agree until December.
We have till, let's see, then the application opens January through March, the next one. So, we would have to, we would have to have it ready by December. And they have agreed to give us several support letters, one from Ms. Schaefer, one from Mr. Quiller, Quiller, sorry, butchering his name.
Is there any fees that we have to pay upfront to apply?
No, no fees.
So, I would think I'm not speaking for council. If there's no downside to it, I think council would say pursue it.
Well, I would, I would just ask if it's something that maybe with the timelines that we could review at the next workshop. Last time, we did talk about some of the grant ideas, and Jan and Troy had some input and said that we may use this grant and then ask for something contingency in case something else. So, as opposed to sending it out and getting individual responses and feedback, I would like to see us talk about it as a group.
And it is my understanding that the grant that Ms. Kovac kindly referred to is, is, it's a lot more secure in getting it than this would be. This is, this is a nationwide grant that we have a very short span to get, and it might not, it might not go, but I mean.
Do as many as you can.
We have to, yeah, we have to put it in regardless, right?
To Councilwoman Mendoka's suggestion, just put it together for us and bring it to us in December, and we'll see what we want to do with it.
Right, because putting in as many as you can is one strategy, but making sure that this one says something that's helpful to us in the event another one comes through, I think will be crucial on the ground.
We don't want you to leave this meeting tonight and then for the next 30 days, you feel we haven't given you direction, and you don't do, you know, you don't do anything. And then we meet in December, and you say, well, you turn the meeting, and you didn't tell me what to do, you know, so. We've done that before, you know, in the past. So, do as Ms. Mendoka suggests, and we'll take it from there.
Okay, if it's okay with you, I'll bring in both grant requests and Ms. Kovac's ideas.
The grant applications, as far as you submit for the budgets and the letters, they're good for this. So, if Georgina does for the home, mobile T. Hometown Grant is just copy and paste consent, if you have double C. grant. It will frustrate you to get like two totally different budgets or anything. You'll have it all in front of you.
Okay, Georgina.
Hand out the offer me.
I pass this out. If you read this, and what was in the word the last three years, it's both docs and rams. All these things, and nothing to Marion County is it, because I think it would be a plus.
Okay, very good. Okay, just one comment. Georgina, I think you're really on something with the Christmas parade, adding the Santa and Ernie O'Spark to it, so people have something to do with their kids before the parade. I really think this is going to catch on and be a year of fun. And it's basically your idea, so I hope it sticks, and let's run with it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Great presentation, a lot of information to absorb. Okay, we're going back to five, and everybody, please be patient. This is sort of tedious legislative sort of thing I've got to go through, so I will do my best. So, we're at, give everybody a chance to act if they want to act. Hey, Mandy, you ready? Okay, we're on agenda item number five.
Oh, oh, sorry. Did you have anything more to add?
Oh, Chief, I'm sorry, Chief, do you have anything? I'm sorry.
15 minutes solid.
Very sorry.
We'd like to give a six-months' report on what the PD has accomplished. We have arrested 54 people within the last six months. 32 of them is charged with felonies. About 50 of them have been charged with misdemeanors, some of them felonies and misdemeanors. We served 11 warrants. We've got two DUIs, 425 vehicle stops, 84 UTC citations, 36 parking citations. And I appreciate you bringing up the river. We have made 447 vehicle stops on the river. We issued 99 citations and issued 282 warnings. That was on the river for the past six months. And I want to report that one of my officers Friday night, we've got a burglary in progress through the alarm system, the tractor supply, and we caught the guy outside the tractor supply. So, that's the second, third burglary in progress that we've got captured. The person, either in business or residence or just outside.
I have to say that this last summer, I have received a just a paucity, a small amount, hardly any complaints about what's going on the river. It's been, the difference this year compared to previous years, the enforcement seems to be remarkable as far as people coming up to me and complaining about what's going on the river. There's a big difference going on.
I'll pass it on to the officers and to our marine unit.
I see you go back and forth all the time, so I know you're out there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Ma'am.
Thank all the hard work and the officers.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mandy, before we move on, is there any other department head? Sorry about that. Okay, we're going to number five. This is a public hearing of ordinance 2021-11. This is about the litter control ordinance. It's advertised on the city website on October 6, 2022, and the Riverland News on November 4, 2022.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
I made you read the public hearing statement.
Okay, please do.
All persons wishing to address the city council will be asked to limit their comments to the specific subject being addressed. Public opinions and input are valued by the council. However, it is requested that comments are directed at specific issues rather than personal comments directed toward council members or staff in order to foster mutual respect between council members and the public. Members of the public in attendance at public forums should listen courteously and attentively to all public discussions before the body and focus on the business at hand. They shall refrain from interrupting other speakers, making personal comments not germane to the business of the body or otherwise interfering with the orderly conduct of meetings. Members of the public addressing city council and boards or commissions on a specific project or proposal are requested to disclose any personal interest or relationship and any business, professional, or financial interests with any individual, group, project, or proposal regarding the subject matter under review. Members of the public should always err on the side of more public disclosure, not less, in order to provide integrity to the public process.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Sodom. So, now it's time to open, correct? It is now 6:45 PM, and I closed the regular meeting and opened the public hearing to discuss public hearing ordinance 2022-11, which is the litter control ordinance, which was advertised on the city's website on October 6, 2022, and the Riverland News on November 4, 2022. So, we have staff comments, and I believe that Andrew, you will lead us on that.
Yes, Mayor, I'd be happy to. This, of course, is the second reading, so this has come before council before, several times in discussion, and of course, for first reading. This ordinance, the city of Denellen does have an existing litter ordinance. The, this ordinance here came out of Marion County's efforts to create a new litter ordinance in the county, asked that the city adopt a similar ordinance. So, that's what we have here in front of us. The terms here have been modified, so it accomplishes exactly what the county is trying to accomplish, but with some slight differences to allow for unique elements within the city's code. And so, that is all the only update I have to give you. I was contacted this morning by one of the attorneys from Marion County. He was just calling to follow up and see where the city was in the process of adopting this ordinance, and I let him know it was up tonight for second reading. And that's all I have. If there are anything in particular or any nuances of the ordinance that council would like to discuss, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for council? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone that would have a public comment on this ordinance, which is basically us passing a litter ordinance that matches what Marion County has littering? Any comments? Okay. Public has had a chance to comment. It is now 6:48 PM, and I closed the public hearing held to discuss ordinance 2022-11 and reopen in November 11, city council meeting. We are now moving to agenda item number six. This is the final reading of ordinance 2022-11, litter control. Do we have a motion?
I'm with ordinance ORD 2022-11. We read by title only.
Do we have a second?
A second?
We have a second by Councilwoman Mendoka. Any discussion? All in favor? Both unanimous. Now, we need a, a motion to approve? Okay, bye.
Ordinance number ORD 2022-11, an ordinance for the city of Denellen, amending chapter 50, Article 4, Littering, Providing for Conflict, Providing for Severability, Providing for Contamination, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion?
Some moves.
Motion to approve ordinance 2022 is on the table by Vice Mayor. Do we have a second?
Sir.
Second by Councilwoman. Councilwoman Williams, any discussion? No discussion, and we bring it for a vote. All in favor? Both. Casts unanimously. Okay, very good. Looks like we go to item number seven on the agenda now.
And I think Mandy's going to do quasi-judicial statement.
Yes. This one's, this is specifically quasi-judicial hearings, which was, the other was just legislative ordinance. All witnesses addressing the city council in these quasi-judicial hearings will be asked to limit their comments to the specific subject being addressed. Witnesses should disclose any personal interest or relationship and any business, professional, or financial interest with any individual, group, or project or proposal regarding the subject matter under review. Witnesses should always err on the side of more public disclosure, not less, in order to provide integrity to the public process. Testimony will be limited to three minutes per witness unless the applicant, staff, or affected person requests an extension of time. A request for extension of time will be considered by the council to assure all parties have a full and fair opportunity to participate without undue repetition and delay. Public input is valued by the council. However, in order to foster mutual respect, personal comments should not be directed toward council members or staff. Members of the public shall refrain from interrupting the speaker at the podium. At the conclusion of these hearings, the city council of the city of Denellen will make a decision whether to approve the applicant's request. All witnesses will be sworn in and will testify under oath. All persons presenting evidence will state their name and residence address for the record. All documentary evidence will be marked as an exhibit and maintained as part of the record if accepted by council. After each witness testifies, any council member may question the witness. The owner is entitled to cross-examine each witness after his or her testimony and shall do so by asking questions of the witness or can rebut the witness testimony by presenting contrary testimony or documents after a witness testifies.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sodom. It is now 6:52 PM, and I closed the regular meeting and opened this quasi-judicial hearing to discuss site plan review, SPL 2022-01, site plan application number PZ20210323, the Dakens Property Holdings Denellen Store LLC-Daniel Young PE, notification to the applicant and the adjacent property owners on 11011222. Will the city attorney now swear in the witnesses?
Will anyone who will be presenting evidence tonight on this item, please stand? Raise your right hand. Do you promise to tell the truth in the testimony you're about to give? If so, please state, "I do."
I do.
Thank you.
Hey, Andrew, at this time, do you, when do we swear in anybody from the public that would like to speak?
Public testimony, well, public speaking is not testimony, so it's not sworn unless members of the public have a special interest of and avail themselves of the rights to question witnesses and participate in the hearing. Otherwise, public comment can be listened to, but it isn't considered in your decision.
Understood. Okay, disclosure of context, contacts, ex parte communications, or other evidence gathered by decision-making bodies. At this time, I am charged with asking each council member individually to disclose any visits, any written or verbal communications or information received in relation to this matter outside the hearing. Any written communications must be submitted into the record. So, at this time, I will go down the line and ask anyone if they have contacted, visited the store, wrote anything, talked to people about this. Ms. Councilwoman Mendoka.
I have not.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Kovac?
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And myself, no. This is nothing more than just divulging. If you have, that question doesn't suggest anything dishonest or illegal. It's just simply, if you have investigated, if you've contacted, if you've discussed it, let us know so we know what you've been involved with. So, even if someone had said yes, that's just simply being honest that, yes, I visited the store. I looked at it or whatever. Okay. So, at this time, we have a presentation by Georgina.
Yes, sir, thank you. And this is an application that was submitted by Mr. Daniel Young regarding the Dankings property, as you mentioned, located at 11899 North Williams Street. The property is about one acre, 1.03 acres. It's situated in a commercial area, Zone B3. It's, uh, they determined they wanted to do a commercial store. They are seeking for approval of this site plan in accordance with Land Development Regulations, Appendix A, zoning sections 9.2, 9.3-1, and 16.14 for a commercial store on the subject property. They have, um, they have, um, I'm sorry. They have met all the requirements according to the, to the Code of Ordinance and, um, and the comprehensive plan. I submitted the staff report with all the information as far as the zoning map and the, and the future land use map and all that. That was all reviewed by our department. And we have gone over existing site data, traffic studies, if need be, but in this case, not necessary, the conceptual plan, the landscaping plan, all that. They have provided information that there's going to be a total of 35 parking spaces in the property. They will be demolishing the existing property there, and as you well know, it's historic, it was, it was, it was there for a while. And they, they acknowledge that, and they want to, they want to maintain the same feel or, or structure features on the, on the new property. But the property that is existing there, they have to demolish, and it has been granted a certificate of appropriateness for demolition by the Historic Board because the, the foundation and the entire building is just not capable of going through, through any kind of code of standards. So they need to take care of that. They were issued this certificate of appropriateness on June 14, and they've submitted information to ratify why this property is really not feasible or, or capable of rescinding anything. So they need to demolish and reconstruct. But they are willing to maintain the same kind of...
Ambiance.
Ambiance. And that would be all for my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Is, uh, sorry, sir, is this? You have any, are you demolishing this for resale? Or are you have a plan?
They're, they're gonna, hold on, sir. They're gonna come up and make their statements.
Okay.
And this is right now is for George.
Thank you.
So, Georgina, if I just want to make a comment. It is my understanding that that building has been there since somewhere like 1926 and was maybe the center of the town commerce for years. That building and that location has historical significance. Probably there's incredible history that has been forgotten that happened within that building. So the question I have, when you have these historic buildings like that, that might be possibly 100 years old, and notably, it's in bad shape, and the foundation's creaky, and the roof's bad, and whatever. You go to places like Boston, or you go to places like Savannah, Georgia, places like that, that have homes and structures that were built pre-Civil War, even before. Certainly, their foundations and their structures were creaky and in bad shape. Visit these places, these historical buildings have been restored, and they're magnificent. I, um, my son went to college in Savannah, Georgia, so when I would visit him, on many occasions, I would stay in those old buildings, including looking at where General Sherman stayed when he invaded Savannah near the end of the Civil War. So, you know, one of the criticisms about Florida is seems to not do a real good job of protecting its history. It's more into its old, let's just tear it down and build something nice and shiny and new. So, you know, I'm just making a statement here. It's just a shame to me that this building and the business that tied into it was the center of this town for many, many years. And to just tear it down and put in a new building, it, it troubles me that other places preserve their historic buildings. But in Florida, we have a tendency to just knock them down and put something new there. So it's just a, a statement.
Yes, and I would like to, to add to that. When we went in front of the Historic Board, the same concerns were raised. And the reason why they accepted the demolition was because, first off, this building was a gas station and tank feed. I, it is my understanding it wasn't really a historic denominated building. On the second point of that, that the building was infested with termites to the point where the trusses are completely gone. They have to redo the trusses. The foundation is, from what I understand, it's, it's, and they can, they can attest to this a little further, but the foundation is not, well, it's not going to sustain the building. So they have to, they have to really redo everything. And it's not feasible for them to restructure a building that it's already down, it's come down. So it's best for them just to demolish and do a new building. But they have agreed to, they have provided information that they're going to do the same exact layout so that it keeps the historic look that was there, but with a, with a sound building that is going to be strong enough to be there for years to come. So...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not expecting you to answer my concerns.
They can elaborate more, but...
Making a statement. It will be sad when you see the bulldozer's out there knocking that down. And I'm sure people that have lived here for 50, 60 years, that building probably meant a lot to them at some time in their life.
And another important fact was that, that the building right now, it's about $200,000 or so. The demolition is going to be like 50. And when it's over, it's gonna be like $150,000 for the building. When they reconstruct, it's going to be 3 million. So I think, I don't know, I think it would be...
Tax base.
It is, it is our recommendation that...
Okay, is your, your report concluded?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. So at this time, I think it's time to ask the owners to come up and give us, give us your presentation. Name and, name and address.
My name is Chaplain Dinkins. My, I reside at 819 Southeast 5th Street of Calhoun. Mayor, if you'd like to talk about some of your comments, I would certainly agree with most of them. The building was built back in the mid-'20s. It was originally a blacksmith's shop. What, and your comment about Florida not preserving the history, I agree with. We haven't done a good job of that. But part of that is because Florida has not done a good job at building good things. There was no foundation underneath the original walls. And when my grandfather took it over, it was a mechanic shop, a welding store, and it was added on to without permits. The, the building itself is rotten and is caving in and is unsafe to be in. We haven't torn it down yet because we want this approval to do so. We did go through the Historic Commission. They have agreed to it. It is our intent to try to preserve some of the ambiance of the site because sentimentally, it is very important to my family. The history there, I fed the chickens there when I was a kid. All right? Uh, Uncle Dink used to give me a dime to buy a soda pop out of the old manual pop machine, right? He used to sell bus tickets there. I, I know what was there. And I, and as a professional contractor for over 24 years, I know what is feasible. For me to restore what's there is impossible. It's two feet below the flood plain and has to be raised. I can't meet any ADA standards. I can't even get public utilities to connect to it without redoing everything. So I certainly agree with your comments, but I want the city to know that we are resident. Our families have been here for generations. And my dad wrote a book of, of the town. So it is our intent to try to keep the name of this, of the store. It'll still be referred to as the store. It's gonna be new. And, and I hope that I can preserve some of the features of the building so that it looks old. This is a very basic rendering. Next, side by side to the existing front elevation. I do have to go back through after the demolition, when our architectural plans are completed. I have to go back through the Historic Board and have them approve the exterior elevations anyway. So what I need you to do is allow me to start with the, the work of developing the site so that I can get this to a place where it does increase the top space and becomes a usable part of the town again.
The two side holdings will be taken?
They're gone. They, they, they will be gone.
Right demo, yes, ma'am. And the, the little mechanic shed out by the road, that'll be gone.
We've already taken all the asbestos out of the buildings, and we're just waiting for the demo, for this approval and scheduling with the subcontractors and so forth.
That'd be so cute, it's a cute little bar.
If, if anybody has to feel remorse or sadness, it would have to be you and your family.
I appreciate that, Mayor. My, you know, grandfather spent his life there after the time in the service, and he took it over. My uncle took it over, ran it until he passed. And my aunt tried to keep it alive for a little while, and it just, it wasn't a good time for that type of a business. And when my dad inherited it from the, um, the estate, Mayor, I, I told my dad, I gotta have it. I mean, it's not financially a good move for me. I mean, honestly, it's a lot of money to tear this down and rebuild right now. But I believe in it, and it's important to the family. So I'm investing here in this community to do that, to let I can keep it the way it was, as best I can.
So I have this correct? The picture on the left is the current building?
That is correct.
And the picture on the right is your rendering of what you're trying to...
That is correct. My family hasn't really bought off on the idea that what we're going to call it, but we were thinking about trying to use the word boomtown like my dad's book. I'm not sure yet. But this is just a very early rendering. Of course, that photo was taken a few years ago, and it was still cleaner.
Well, I think it's, um, very apropos and very much appreciated that your rendering is so closely resembles the original building. I, I don't know what more you could do. That's pretty awesome.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is anyone else that would like to speak on your behalf? Do you have a partner here or somebody?
This is my civil engineer. We're here to answer any questions you have.
Any questions, any additional questions?
What timeline are y'all looking at?
Everybody's busy, I don't know.
Oh, no, I, I don't know.
Vice Mayor, we have already got a contract in place with the demolition contractor. They have not completed the permitting requirements because the asbestos had to be abated, which has all been removed. So what's his schedule like? I can't be, I couldn't begin to be on record and tell you, but he is contracted, and we're hopeful that it'll spend soon.
Any other?
Just like to thank you for taking this project on and keeping the Dinkins family here.
Thank you very much. We're glad to be part of the community.
I think 30 years ago, I bought one of his little chickens.
There's a lot of memories there. It's a shame that there's more people that will go through this. But they're all chickens.
No, my grandmama had charts that I could go get down.
And there was no cards, they would write out the ticket.
Yeah, and they came and did the gas.
Yes, ma'am. I kept the ticket box, it's in my, it's in my office back home. So I, I found a two-by-four that was stamped with my grandfather's name. You know, that's how they used to sell lumber. They would burn, would burn the name into the lumber and sell it that way, so...
Can I just inquire if there's any kind of underground tanks on the property?
There were, years ago, when my dad inherited it. My uncle, prior to, when it was still functioning to maintain his licensing, had to replace all the tanks with double walls. So when my dad inherited it, we paid to have the tanks removed, and it's fully tested out, it's all clean. No, there's been no issues. But the tanks have been gone for years.
Okay, and were there, I really did my best to go over, um, to go over the request with the appendix, but it was a lot of reading.
It's a lot of information. Your, your, your department managers, it's extremely thorough.
Were there, were there soil tests done there in conjunction with the request?
Yeah, the report is about six, you know, 60-some pages.
I just want to say, I remember as a little girl catching the bus there to go to with my grandmother to Jefferson County. And then my husband worked for Mr. Dinkins for a long time.
Yeah.
Years ago, Curly.
Curly, oh, Mr. Curly. He used to run me back and forth to the river.
Used to go places with them, you know, very historic.
Yeah.
You know, what would be fun would be, or you are someone who's into history, to reach out to those in the city that have a story about this store. You know, like Ms. Williams just said, catching the bus there, and just kind of compile a little booklet of the history, just private little stories that maybe no one's heard of or knows. I think that would be...
Is that a project you're gonna stick on?
There's a lot of historians out here that would do that. Before, before Mr. Dinkins leaves the podium, I would ask council to try to think of any additional questions or comments you have for him. It's my understanding that if we have to bring him back up, then we have to restart this entire process over again. Is that correct? Is that correct?
You would just have to have that opportunity again for any kind of cross-examination or anything like that, but the actual hearing doesn't even restart it.
I would have to get a gap once, start holding it up and close it, things like that.
All right.
If the testimony was closed, you'd have to reopen it with the Galloway.
So if you can think of any question you have, we don't have to go through that whole process. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. At this time, we have public comment. Is there anybody in public that would like to make comments on this? Ms. Odom, anybody happen to be unsung that might be wanting to make a comment?
Do not have any hands raised.
Okay, please note that we have followed the procedures as closely as we possibly can by the book. The principal, principles of it have spoken. The public has had an opportunity to speak. The council has discussed it and answered questions. So the formal presentation of evidence is closed. It is now 7:14, and I close this quasi judicial hearing and now reopen the November 14, 2022 city council meeting. Deliberations of the decision made by, this is the opportunity for council. Is this the opportunity for council to discuss anything further? Ms. Odom?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there anyone who would like to make any additional comments on this? No one wants to make any different, uh, additional comments? All right, we are now moving to agenda item number eight. All right, agenda item number eight. We've already moved through the deliberations. There are no deliberations, there's no additional discussion. Council does not, council need any additional clarifications? Okay. Now we're gonna move to agenda item number 10. Is that correct?
No, I, I need to find the site plan consistent with the city's comprehensive plan for the site plan application, PG 20210323, Dinkins Property Holdings Dunellen Store LLC.
We have a second?
Second?
We have a second. Any discussion? No discussion? Okay, we bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Very good.
There is a second motion under item number eight.
Right, I move the site plan, SPL 2022-01, number PG 20210323 for Dinkins Property Holdings Dunellen Store LLC be approved.
Do we have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? It passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Dinkins.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Stay proud of yourself.
Okay, Ms. Odom, we're at number nine?
You did too.
Okay, we're at number nine though, right? And I appreciate everyone hanging in there. This is, uh, quite a, feel like I'm putting a jigsaw puzzle together here. Okay. It is now seven seventeen. And I close the regular meeting and open this quasi judicial hearing to discuss site plan SPL twenty twenty-two dash zero two, site plan application, number PZ two zero two two zero three five six, WJL Realty Investments LLC dash Mark P. Meyer, P E, notification to applicants and adjacent property owners on eleven zero two twenty-two. At this time, City Attorney Hand, will you please swear in the witnesses?
Yes, Mayor. Would anyone who would be presenting evidence on this item at this time, please stand and raise your right hand? Under penalty of perjury, do you promise to tell the truth in the testimony you're about to give? If so, please state I do. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, uh, we will go through it again. The disclosure of contacts, ex parte communications, or other evidence gathered by this decision-making body. And this is the decision-making body. So I will go individually to each council member and ask each member to disclose any site visit, any written or verbal communication, or any information received in relation to this matter outside of this hearing. Any written communication must be submitted into the record. The City Attorney will ask each council member to disclose the ex parte communication. If the communications will prejudice the member from considering the evidence presented during, uh, the hearing and making a fair or impartial decision. So, uh, Councilwoman Covich, do you have anything to disclose?
No, sir.
Councilwoman Mandoka?
I, I will say, although it doesn't bring prejudice, I, um, before I knew all of the rules of such a hearing, I did speak with a resident at a nearby home, simply asking if she knew of the project that was coming to her, to her property there or to near her, in her area. I didn't speak in any details about the project or against the project. I simply assessed if she knew that such a business was coming.
Do you think your communication prejudiced you in any way to make an impartial decision? Are you okay with that, Ms. Mr. Hand?
Yes, and if the applicant would like to ask further questions, they do have that right. But, um, that's all that needs to happen right now.
Okay. Ms. Williams, do you have anything to disclose?
Um, just that one of my church members did receive a letter and asked me what it meant. That's it.
In any, in any way, does that prejudice your ability to make an impartial decision?
No.
Vice Mayor, answer.
I'm sorry, I did not speak with anyone.
And to the best of my recollection and knowledge, neither, um, neither have I. Okay, very good. So now we go to the next part of it. This is the city staff report. I think that's Georgina?
Yes, it is. Um, so this, um, this is another site plan review, as you mentioned, that went in front of the planning board. And they've, uh, recommended for approval. It is, um, it is brought forward by Mr. Mark Meyer. And I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not pushering your last name, right?
No, you're good.
And, uh, he's bringing, uh, the property owner, uh, WJL Realty Investments LLC, um, which, uh, actually the property's gonna be called Wright Turn Auto Center, but it's under WJL Realty Investments. Uh, right now, the lot is vacant. Uh, there are three parcels on that lot, um, that were identified on the, on the Stanford port. Uh, the, the land use is commercial and the zoning is V three. Um, the construction is gonna be about three thousand six hundred square feet. Um, and it's gonna be for a new automobile repair shop. They already have one in Ocala, from what I understand. It's been very lucrative. And so they want to bring it to the city of Dan Allen. Uh, they are seeking approval of this site plan based on Land Development Regulations, Appendix A, zoning, uh, sections nine point two, nine point three dash one, and sixteen point fourteen for an automobile repair shop on the subject property, like I said before. And, um, in reviewing this, this staff and preparing the staff report, I had to review the, the requirements, uh, as per our code, which I already did. Uh, and they have met all the criteria involved in that, uh, review. Uh, just, uh, for a matter of background, they are across from the First Bethel Vassus Church on one one eight four nine North William Street. And they have submitted, submitted boundary and topography surveys, existing condition demolition plans, proposed site plan, grading and drainage plan, and an escaping plan with details. The comprehensive plan sections were reviewed to make sure that they met all the criteria again and have provided the different mapping, uh, tools to provide information to you all. They said that there, there's gonna be a total of fourteen parking spaces, uh, that will be provided at this property. Eight spaces, one handicap, and six service space. And they will, uh, during their presentation, they're gonna give you more information on that as you request. Uh, it is staff recommendation that you, that you approve the site plan review based on the, um, on the requirements that they've met, uh, with our land development regulations and city comprehensive plan and city code of ordinance. And the planning commission, uh, has, uh, done a resolution approving said site plan. So.
Okay.
That would be all for my presentation.
Thank you very much. At this time, uh, we're gonna ask for a presentation by the applicant, uh, the owner, to make a presentation to establish entitlement to the action requested from the council. So is there someone that would like to speak to this? Both of you can speak if you'd like. Name and address.
Hi there, my name is Will Martins. I'm at ninety-six eighty-five Southwest one oh five street. This is my engineer, Mark Mayer. I have been in automobile visits my entire life. I've, uh, went to great school here in Dan Allen. Always been one of my wishes is to open up locations in Dan Allen. Properties were available, so I, I pushed forward with it and, and here we are today. I wanna bring, uh, some business to your community. I feel like I could service your community and, uh, service, uh, customers in area.
Would you like to speak? Are you, are you finished?
Yeah, what efforts have you got here?
Would you like to speak to?
Uh, I'm here to answer any questions. I'm Mark Meyer, address ten thirty-three South Glen Meadow Loop, Lakeview, Florida. I'm Mr. Martin, civil engineer. I'm just here to answer any questions you may have pertaining to the, um, project.
Okay. Is there any, uh, one on counsel? Ms. Covich, do you have any questions?
I think you'll do well here.
Thank you. Ms. Mandoka?
Yeah, my question's, uh, much like the last plan, um, asks about hazardous waste material storage. So I, I know under the code that that's part of the plan. Um, and I'm just wondering if that, if, I just wanna confirm that we know what the plan is for that.
Sure. A lot of that stuff is regulated with inspectors that come out that actually inspect your facility. Most of the waste that you think about would be used motor oil, of course. That's very highly regulated. I mean, all it takes is a quart of that and a ground here in big trouble. So there's precautions that needs to be made as far as, uh, above ground tanks, amount of concrete around it. That's all smart regulations when you, operation begins.
And that's all, is that all, would that be included in the site plan that you submitted?
No, that's not one of the requirements.
Okay. So that's something that we see down the line?
Yeah, I think when you go, I don't think it comes, I mean, forgive me for not knowing answers to this question. I don't think it comes in front of the board. I think it's when we get our CO and we move in, we get our name, the state comes out and inspect our location. The state is one who regulates it. I'm pretty sure that's how it goes down, but I don't wanna be on record, uh, really, uh.
Thanks for explaining it.
Yeah, but there won't be no gasoline, nothing like that. And as far as the main thing would be motor oil.
Super, thank you.
Councilwoman Lemon, Williams?
Well, what came to my mind? I was just wondering, are you gonna be doing like minor car repairs or changes and stuff like that?
There's a science to the auto service business. Obviously, if, if you have a great customer that has a minor repair and all of a sudden their car gave them a major headache, so you'd wanna service them. But yes, I, I would be focusing more on the minor repairs, more of the late model vehicles that are out of a factory warranty type deal. Where, say you have that twenty seventeen, that there's no more factory warranty anymore. You don't wanna go to the dealership, but you wanna go on a nice, clean, state-of-the-art facility. That would be us. We would wanna specialize in like EV vehicles that are coming out of market now. And of course, all the way to abroad to the one ton trucks. There's a lot of trucks in this area. And I've noticed that some mechanic shops kinda shy away from the larger vehicles. And we'd wanna be able to service the larger vehicles, but more of a service station.
And I think I asked this before when I was here at the planning meeting. You said that you're not going to be doing any type of mechanical work on Sundays, right?
No, that's, that's Sunday's doctor's day.
That's one, all right.
As long as I'm in charge now.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Do y'all have a, I, I didn't see, do y'all have a conceptual drawing of what you're gonna look like or kinda?
Um, I think there's a photo that was submitted of, uh, the, the building plan. It should be. And obviously, we're not gonna, I'm not into the pink or, or yellow buildings or anything like that, all earth tones.
Oh, okay, that's.
And that, that might be something you're thinking about.
That's kinda, I mean, and, and, cause you're not gonna be far from Dinkins.
There you go.
Okay.
Yes, so, um, I, I always push more for, um, lighter gray, darker grays, uh, white doors. Not something that's gonna, you can be able to see from my space force.
All right, I mean, yeah. I, I know we don't have color, you know, issues here in Dan Allen, you know, our ordinances, but thank you.
No problem. I know the historical board, excuse me, the historical, uh, line is, I think, right before the gas station. So I'm kinda out of that zone, but still, we're gonna be kinda like.
Especially kinda with Dinkins coming in, kinda like.
Yeah, it'll spruce up that area of the strip.
Thank you. I wish y'all the best of luck.
Thank you so much, thank you.
All right, I have just a couple of comments. As you witnessed when we were talking to the Dinkins ownership, one of the movements that's currently ongoing very strongly in Dan Allen is how we look from the road. We're very concerned about the abandoned buildings. We're very concerned about some untidy looking things. There is a movement to try to make it when you drive through the city, we don't look like we have rundown heels on our shoes, right? When, we just did a study recently about how we can improve this particular area. One thing that was pointed out by the presenter was the number of transmission shops, tire shops, auto repair places that really made it challenging to improve the visual aspects of what the city looks like. So now in a, kind of an area where we've got a lot of new construction and it's kinda a little brighter and shinier and kinda, you know, looks a little different. You know, we have another auto shop going in that really, uh, we have a study that twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars that was spent that basically said, these are difficult to make the city look good when you have these. So, uh, we would be, uh, very disappointed if we passed this and it had that shabby look with, you know what I'm saying?
I know.
I don't need to go into that.
I'm a firm believer.
We're trying to get away, we're trying to move away from that look.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a firm believer, you can't make a second first impression. Guy that has a fifty, sixty thousand dollar truck's not gonna pull into a shabby looking place. I am investing a pretty good, you know, decent amount of money building this building.
Your property is right where the, uh, Riley's car park is?
No, it's, uh. It's right.
Y'all just.
Oh, it's Sid though, yeah, okay.
Exactly, yeah, so I basically would clear that wooded section that's there and put a building there. But, uh, I mean, I'm planning on building a state-of-the-art facility. It's not gonna be, uh, I don't wanna be the shabby mom and dad pop. I would, I would demolish the building then. I mean, it, it, I'm investing a decent amount of, uh, amount of money to do a very nice job for you.
What's your timeframe if you get the approval that you need?
Well, just like Ms. Odom just said, uh, it seems like everyone's giving us inflation, everything's taking forever. It, it just seems like the process, I wanted to be in this building this year, uh, actually, no, last year. But, uh, just, I know ordering the building, if there's a delay, it seems like even getting the surveying done took me almost four months to get that done. And I had to beg them to do it and we're still having issues going back and forth. Everyone's so busy. I'm, I'm pushing forward as quick as things will move forward. It's just a matter of depending on everyone else's.
Would you say it'd be reasonable a year from now?
I would say so.
Yeah, we have permits from Swift Moon and FDOT. So basically approval from the city and water and sewer from FGUA is the last two things we're waiting on before we can move forward.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any additional questions or comments? As before, I would ask you to try to think of them now. Because if we have to bring them back up, we have to kinda restart this process again. It's no big deal, but we would have to do that. Any questions you can think of?
Hopefully, there will be, there will not be any abandoned vehicles, you know, who take their cars there to get fixed and then they just begin to buy it. It's not, they don't want it.
Well, one thing you do notice that the way that I've designed the building, I want a quick and easy workflow. I don't even have the space for abandoned buildings there. And a lot of times when you see that abandoned buildings and mechanic shops because the owner probably didn't get the proper work order signed where they can't process and actually take legal action against the abandonment of that vehicle there. So they're kinda like stuck in that loophole. Guy just drops off his car, throws the keys. When he finds out he needs a four thousand dollar repair, he just walks away, takes his license plate off. And the shop is stuck with dealing with the expensive, getting rid of that vehicle, applying for the title and, and not having any documentation who even the real owner is. Sometimes it's his grandmother's car that let the grandson abandon it there. So it's just a matter of running the business properly, getting the right documentation. I don't want abandoned building, uh, vehicles anywhere. I don't have the space for that. So I, I, I really want someone to come in like yourself.
It doesn't look like you would have space for it.
Come in for no change, sit down, have a cup of coffee, speak with my wife, and you either send them in. That would be my, my main goal.
Yeah, it doesn't look like you would have space for it, you know, the cars.
No.
Okay, good.
What Ms. Williams has said is a lot of times auto places have cars that seemingly sit there for a long time. And you ask what's going on. It's, uh, the person hasn't picked it up yet or whatever. And the grass gets about knee high and you're just wondering where the person's. So we, we would, I, I mean, I think I could speak for the city, cause I, I have a pulse, whether it's the city. Yeah, if this became a visual eyesore, the city would be very disappointed.
I don't think we're talking to that caliber of gentleman.
Not, not at all.
I almost wish they could have heard your presentation from the planning about how you, you worked hard to save the trees. And like, there was a lot of things you cited at the planning council.
I have written down, but.
Really makes me feel like you wanted to do the right thing.
Actually, I might have to do a thing for that. So we had to move the building around a little bit, the, the same most oak tree that we can. I'm a, you almost never cut down an oak tree unless you absolutely have to. But, uh, so the way that we had early position was to save the, the most amount of trees. I think we're even planting, uh, uh... I think we're even planting, we're planting, yes, seven more oaks and four more great myrtles and 188 wax myrtles.
Yes, my full review says that you were very thoughtful and I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, any additional comments? Very good, alright. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, best of luck to y'all.
Thank you.
Might need an oil change one day.
Okay, yeah, well now?
Public.
Public, oh yeah, almost, almost got it. Okay, is there any public comment on this before we continue? Yes, name and phone number or address.
Dave Porter, 11835 East Blue Cove in Dunellen. So recognize what's happening tonight, it's really important to think about it. The Deakins family has had their gas stations and feed store here forever. And I like to say that my kids, and I always enjoyed the little biddies in that yellow crate when you go in. We got all our garden vegetables and stuff. But that family has left a lot of history with Lester writing his book and then passing it down and then spending a lot of money to make a business in Dunellen. That's the roots of a business that will stay here forever. Now, somebody else that goes to school in Dunellen and then wants to come back and make an investment in Dunellen, you can't get any better than that.
That's a good point.
You cannot get any better than that.
Yes, that is a good point.
So also are the historic board and kind of understands a lot about the city. So with that being said, I will make a big ask, and I know how big an ask this is. If we can use anything as far as painting, false facades, decoration or anything to go along with the Deakins store, that will really, I think, actuate what, what you're talking about, Mayor. We now know what Deakins is going to conceptively look like. And if anything you can do to make it look like an old gas station or anything that gets along with the theme of Boomtown, I'll reiterate, I know that's a big ask, but, you know, think outside the box. And I challenge you to do that because with the church across the street and if somebody does something with the Masonic Lodge and kind of in that same thing, it makes a lot of road frontage in Dunellen make a tremendous increase. So I'll make that ask and thank you very much for investing in our city and we wish you good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, would you like to speak? Alright, Mandy, anybody on Zoom?
No, sir.
Okay, excellent. Gavel down, it is now 7:40 PM. I closed this quasi judicial hearing and now reopen the November 14, 2022 city council meeting. This is now time for any discussion by council. Anything further to discuss, Ms. Covich?
No discussion?
Ms. Williams? Vice Mayor?
No, sir.
None for myself. So now we're going to move to agenda item number 10, for those of you that are still following us. It's consideration of site plan 2022-2, site plan application, PZ 2022-0356, WJL Realty Investments LLC. Do we have a motion?
I move to find the site plan consistent with the city's comprehensive plan.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. We have another proposed motion.
I have the site plan at number SPL 2022-02, number PZ 2022-01356 for WJL Realty Investments LLC, be approved.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Ms. Williams, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Get home.
Okay, we have already done number 11. So now we are moving to agenda item number 12. This is the construction of the two shade pavilions at City Beach. Is there any comment before we ask for public discussion so someone may know what to make a comment on?
Yes, sir, I presented this at the workshop. We went a little bit over the cost of Chuck Dillon, who's a local licensed contractor, has offered to volunteer his services, labor, to help construct the shade shelters. We have a budget of $30,000 for this project. He believes that we can get it done for less than $10,000 if the city pays nothing but the cost of materials, which would be the lumber and the concrete footing. And he's also getting the shingles donated from hill roofing.
So, so everybody knows what Mr. Dillon is volunteering to do is if we supply the materials minus the roof, he's going to construct it, supply the labor and there will be no fee.
Right.
That's awesome.
That's pretty, pretty amazing. Okay, any discussion on that? Our public comment first. Okay, no public comment? Okay, council? Well, we need a motion and then we can discuss, do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion to authorize the expenditures for the construction of the two shades, shade pavilions at City Beach and it's not to exceed $15,000.
Subject.
Okay, it's. Ms. Williams made the motion, seconded it. Okay, is there any, any further discussion on that?
I just think it's awesome.
No discussion, public comment has been taken, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, I have an opposed vote.
You oppose? Okay, so it passed one. Okay, we go to number 13, discussion of the code enforcer officer position. Was that already covered in your presentation?
I don't know, Mandy has anything else to add?
No, I would suggest that we go ahead and with the interview with the applicant, see how that goes. If that doesn't work out, then we have the Plan B with the chief. Hopefully would still be an option if it doesn't work out.
Okay, and just so council knows, if you haven't heard, this is something that Georgina and Mandy, Shaken the Trees, have found a very viable code enforcement officer. Five days ago, when we were discussing this, it seemed like there was no answer to this. And hopefully, this person who's fully qualified has the credentials and whatever agrees and we agree. Wouldn't that be a relief, huh? And I was listening to your report at the workshop, I mean, I was just saying, where do we go with this?
It was depressing.
So it's, and then we have our backup chief has some ideas too. Any further comments on number 13?
I would just say that I do think it's hopeful that we, that we've found an applicant and that we're pursuing that. I had done some calling around since the last meeting as well. And if this wouldn't work out, I know that we would bring it back for conversation. Learning that the certification can be obtained at level one within two years of the hiring and that the Florida State statute really doesn't have a lot of requirements for prior education for the position. Also reading about some alternative ways that cities meet this need outside of a very traditional, you know, finding a certified qualified code enforcer. So I do think with some time, thinking outside the box is, is possible if for any reason the current applicant doesn't work out.
Thank you. I know this would be a big load off of Georgina, right, Georgina?
Dan will do the jig.
And I do want to just say, before we get off it, Georgina is dealing with a menagerie of issues. First and foremost, she has inherited a mess. I mean, if you, if you said to her, don't do anything other than what is wrong, she could be working all day long, every day, just fixing what's wrong. But on top of that, she's having to deal with new, having to do with new applicants, new violations, new things. That in itself is a full-time job, correct? So it's, and the pressure that's on you is I can come up here and mess up on the order of the agenda. And one of my fellow councilmen will say, ah, ah, and it's, it's an easy fix, right?
Try.
But when you make a mistake, it's not an easy fix. So on top of that, you know, there's a lot of pressure. And I think we need to say verbalize that you don't, you don't have an easy task.
That's right. Appreciate that. I also.
Appreciate you.
Yes.
Briefly, that when Georgina gave her presentation and said there's 78 items total, that there really is a lot going on. And I just recognize our responsibility at council that when someone has that much on their plate, to be able to hear that summary from her of this is what I'm dealing with, I certainly don't know all the steps involved with rolling out the new software or these kinds of things. So I think that this kind of communication is really important. So as a council, if, if we see that her plate is too full, that we can help prioritize and direct and, you know, just help prioritize as a council as opposed to Georgina continuing to take more things on and feeling that feeling of being overwhelmed.
Well, sir, for sure. Anything else?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Alright, so it's, it's looking promising on agenda item number 13 with the code enforcement. Hopefully, maybe by December, the mists of autumn, we may have some sort of guidance, maybe, an idea, 30 days from now. That would be, that'd be nice for us, as a president.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, we go to number 14, council liaison reports and comments. We'll start off with Ms. Covich, do you have any comments?
Nothing to report.
Hmm?
Nothing.
Ms. Menboka?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
No, sir, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Just that, three of us, unexpectedly, we all had lunch together, we didn't have lunch. I mean, poor Andrew, one of his head popped up about, no, we happened to be at the same, of course, for the meeting today. It was just interesting about, you know, Mr. Perdue was there and it's kind of funny that he talked more about the hurricane and all they've done more than what we were getting around here. And, you know, just that the farmway, 19% of that is, that area is part of the farmway is Marion County. 11% is really the urban growth band and that's more of that Okaloa area. But it's, and, and this was very important, I did, I even highlighted, I was about to skip it. Jan, did you know, and y'all, please correct me if I misunderstood what I heard, we were not sitting anywhere near each other, Andrew. There's no sunshine in that place. But that the end of the one cent gas tax is ending at the end of 2024. Did you, did you hear that, that what Tracy said? So I just wanted, so that's a revenue that will be leaving us unless they.
They didn't, they didn't put it, they're putting it back on the balance?
They did at this time now. So that's just something, I mean, I know we only get like, what, 49,000, 59,000?
No, the one cent sales tax?
Yeah, which one is?
Oh, we get a couple hundred thousand.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry. Anyway, so that's one that we should be worried about.
The gas tax, is that?
One cent sales.
Probably has to be related.
It was the one cent, it was the one cent that they used for roads.
That's the one cent discretionary sales tax. Sure, it's four year to implement it with the tax.
But anyway, that was just, I didn't realize it was going away in 2024, so just something to be worried about. So, but it was interesting what they were saying and again, you know, it's kind of funny, they, the thing about the northern Trump hike, they kept trying to kind of skirt around it, but it's, it's still there in their sights, it's just something not to let our eyes off of. The way they were kind of wording it was just kind of peripheral vision kind of thing, so, I thought that was interesting.
I picked up on that also.
They do, okay, I, that was my take also, that we're not going to tell you that it's off the table because it still is on the table. Yeah.
And they got some boos and alls, you know, so they, one thing you might be, you'll probably enjoy this, council. Is I went up to Mr. Perdue, who is the secretary?
Secretary of General.
And I had my name tag on, Bill White, Mayor. And he's, you know, the top guy in transportation and he looked at me, he looked at my name tag. And he says, Bill White? I says, yes. He says, you guys are pretty vocal. So we, we got FDOT's attention. He, he knew, he knew what Dunellen was, you didn't have to tell him where Dunellen was.
And he was the chair when I was on the emporers, I mean, super nice guy, super nice man, so, but yeah, just hating to the different fronts that we like.
So he didn't realize he made my day when he said that. I said, alright, you know, we're relevant. My only comment is to council, anticipating there may be discussion on this as we go into our November meetings, when there's going to be a swearing in of the new council members.
December meetings? December?
Okay, December, sorry. I always get, you notice I get like this the last half an hour? There will probably be some question on the transfer of power. It really isn't spelled out, it's more of a tradition that what council does, it starts the final meeting that's going to include swearing in, but actually conducts some old business first before the swearing in. I know when I first got sworn in four years ago, I kind of didn't like that. I felt like, wait a second, you guys are finishing up business and then when everything's done, now you're saying you're going to swear me in later. So I just, I don't know what the other council members may think or feel, but whether or not they voice in opposition to being sworn in when we decide to swear them in or whether they're sworn in at the beginning, what we do, I just throwing that out there, that I'm expecting something to be said.
What does our attorney think about this?
Mandy brought it up and, and we did have a discussion on it. Staff has reviewed it and does not see anything in the policies, so it becomes a matter of custom. And when you have a custom in place, that custom, you know, is something that's happened for this period, this amount of time, that should be followed unless council indicates a will to deviate from that or create a new custom. So essentially, this is something that is up to council at this time, if it's something you want to consider.
Well, if I can, I mean, kind of, yeah. With Anita and I are kind of being, but we still have to as a council vote, if I'm not mistaken, correct, Mandy, on the results, don't we have to certify the results?
Yes, according to our code, I have to bring to you at that first regular meeting after the election results have been certified, those certified results. And it's, it's not really, it's just because it's in the code, you're not really certifying the results, but it says council will certify the results as the official results. So that, and then following that, you have oath of office of the new members.
Okay, so who would, if, if we state a tradition, who is it that decides on the agenda when we're done with old business?
Well, worse.
Where, where is, is that?
Well, worse still, I mean.
I'm just anticipating maybe a question, and I would just like to have it resolved before.
Right, right, but I mean, as city council members, we are still active city council members. And if I want to put on the agenda of the December that I want to paint the building purple and blue.
Oh, no.
Oh, I hope not. But I mean, I still have the right to have those types of things put on the agenda now. So, and the agenda is, you know, still up for us to vote on, but it's all old business. And so far, old business is going to be, hopefully, the.
Later.
If you have the agreement, or you will have the, probably the agreement to discuss your first reading of the ordinance, that would be considered old business. Or anything that you, as a council, direct staff to put on the agenda at the workshop in December would be considered old business. And typically, historically, traditionally, anything that is currently in motion in front of a council at that first council meeting in December is considered old business, and it's addressed before the swearing in, and you handle new business.
And just kind of, and I'm looking, and it's not because of me being here, but it's the future council members. I don't know, it just kind of smacks a little bit of you're dismissed and I'll be gone with yourselves. I mean, there's still, I think every council member that serves has the right to finish their term as a full, working, non-lying duck council member. And I think it's a little disrespectful if the tradition is not, I mean, everybody has had the same, and it's not like we're trying to vote on raising the military. Now, that I would give you, but I think it's, I just think it's a little disrespectful to even think about not giving those people that have served honorably the respect that they deserve to finish their terms.
So, Valerie, what would, what would that look like for you? I don't remember the procedure. Is that sitting through the whole meeting?
No, 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 no. You just vote, you do your consent agenda. Basically, if there's any old business, and it's always been, I can't think of anything very controversial that's ever been brought up, and a old business kind of thing. And then it's, we say thank you and goodbye, and.
And usually, there's a short, you know, little thank you certificate.
Presentation.
That kind of, for the outgoing members, and then the new members are sworn in.
Yeah, and everybody shakes hands, and we have a peaceful.
Exchange.
Exchange of power as it should be in this United States of America.
Well, and I think where we're at is that's what we want. And so I'm just trying to predetermine when that happens so there's no controversy at the time.
Think that we fix it.
Why don't we wait till the agenda comes out and then we draw the line in the sand?
I just drew the line.
So I just don't want the, I don't want the oncoming council members to feel like we are determining when they can come on based on we get our business done. So it's just me, I've sat in that position four years ago, and I didn't like that.
And I have too, and I have too, so.
I didn't like that at all.
I've done the exact same thing two different years, when I was younger and not as sweet.
Okay, so we'll just take no action. It's just, it's just a discussion. It's just me saying I think there may be a concern by some of the oncoming council members.
Tim, are you going to be upset? Thank you, Tim.
Okay, we just have one word that's in the woods, huh?
Well, then he'll be fine if he gets the big guy.
All right.
One more thing?
Yes.
Can I keep the seat? Remember the last time we moved in, we.
Usually, usually.
Played musical chairs.
The mayor moved us last time, taught us knowing. Kid was there, sit there.
And Andrew down. It's pretty, it's pretty.
Usually the way it is.
I'll make sure you stay there.
Thank you.
If you request it, fine, but usually the way it is, the most tenured people sit toward the middle.
Well, that's what you do.
And the end people, that's usually how it, how it.
Well, that's how you change.
Well, I can show you that's how it usually works. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
You have to take a public comment.
No, there is no public comment.
Andrew, do you have a report?
Yeah.
He's out. Troy.
All in favor?
Troy, we already did our, we did this.
Adjourn, thank you.